I'm Brian Rudy, I will call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mayor Rudy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Spear.
Here.
Member Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Castle.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address city council on any item not on our agenda tonight? I will open up a few of those items tonight to the public. Is there anyone here that wishes to address council on any other item? Please step up to the podium, state your name and address, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Stephen Grant, 2405 Doc Drive here in Evans. And I'm an Evans resident and I know that we're going to be getting to the valuable discussion on oil and gas here lately, or later on, so I'm excited about that as well. But I wanted to talk to you for a moment tonight about the Second Amendment Sanctuary County Resolution that was passed by Weld County last week. It now falls to the cities to adopt that same resolution in order for it to be contemplated, considered within the cities and other municipalities. And one of the reasons why I am for a Second Amendment Resolution being passed by the city of Evans is because of what I have here that I will give to your team as well. It is Title 18, Section 242, and I have a copy here from the Department of Justice. And it says this, it says that if there is an act that is done by federal, state, or local officials within their lawful authority, but it violates the United States or state constitution, that those people can be charged, they can be sued. City council members can be charged and sued, even imprisoned, and so forth, if it violates the person's constitutional rights. And since the current Colorado red flag law does violate the Fourth Amendment and several others, I think the Weld County did a very nice job of codifying that within their resolution and articulating which rights and which of those parameters, both in the federal and the state constitution, have been violated. My concern, quite frankly, is for you, it's for our law enforcement officers, and for those that would be doing those things, that they would not carry indemnity in this area. So I have copies of this and I would like to encourage the city of Evans in adopting the Second Amendment Sanctuary City clause and a resolution here within the city of Evans on that.
Just to let you know, we have, as the city council, have discussed that very issue and we have asked staff to reach out to Weld County Commissioners to provide us a copy of that resolution so we can, at our next meeting, hopefully, read that in and adopt that as well. So that is definitely coming, and I think a lot of us here, I won't speak for everybody, but I know myself, I am a very strong supporter of the Second Amendment and all of our rights to due process as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address city council on any item not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is approve the agenda. I will be changing the agenda tonight. I will be moving Item C, consideration of Resolution Number 06-2019, a resolution opposing enactment of Senate Bill 19-181. I will be moving that to the top, we will be doing that first. Item C will replace, and then we'll go down after that.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
I second.
I have a motion to second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion passes. Item 6, consent agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 5, 2019. Item B, consideration of Ordinance Number 692-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 5.08 of the Evans Municipal Code to conform with recent revision to the Colorado Revised Statute, second reading.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion passes. New business, Item C. Resolution Number 06-2019 opposing to Senate Bill 19-181 regarding new oil and gas legislation. GM, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Senate Bill 19-181 is a bill that's rapidly making its way through the state's legislature. The bill would really dramatically change the statutory landscape for oil and gas development in Colorado. It would allow cities and counties to effectively ban oil and gas development, thereby really weakening the industry and discouraging further oil and gas development in Colorado. Staff certainly feels that these consequences could ultimately undermine the industry's confidence in Colorado operations, and that could devastate the Evans economy, which is highly dependent on the industry for residents' employment, local economic activity, and city revenue directly. As for example, in 2018, the industry generated more than a million dollars of sales tax alone. We know that indirect economic and revenue benefits, such as property taxes paid by the industry and its employees, and sales taxes paid on activity that wouldn't occur without the industry, add millions to the city's revenue base. So we feel that it's a significant threat to the community, and for that reason, I know, Mayor, you requested that staff draft a resolution opposing this bill. And that concludes the staff's remarks.
Great, thank you, Jim, very much. Yes, I did ask that the staff write a resolution and bring this before our city council. I'd like to read the resolution at this time. The City of Evans, Colorado, Resolution Number 06-2019, a resolution opposing enactment of the Senate Bill 19-181 regarding new regulation of oil and gas development. Whereas Senate Bill 19-181 is under consideration by the Colorado House of Representatives, whereas Senate Bill 19-181 would impose new regulations on oil and gas industry that would have chilling effect on oil and gas development in Colorado. Whereas Evans is home to over 100 companies and 500 employees of the energy sector who are directly dependent on oil and gas operations for their income. And whereas the city of Evans relies heavily on the oil and gas industry for operating revenue, receiving over 1.5 million in sales tax alone in 2018 that supports basic public services such as police, infrastructure maintenance, park facilities, recreational programs. And whereas, if the oil and gas industry were severely curtailed, city of Evans would lose access to grant funds that provide almost $2 million in 2019 and 2020. And whereas Colorado voters defeated a statewide ballot measure with potentially similar intent and with consequences in the November 2018 general election. Whereas Colorado oil and gas companies proved to be invaluable civic partners in our community, sustaining the community during a catastrophic flood in 2013, donating hundreds of labor hours, large equipment, heavy machinery, security fencing, and sanitary facilities. That is the resolution I wanted to bring up tonight. And I want to start by just saying, Colorado, we voted on this. We voted on this last November overwhelmingly. Colorado voted it down. Weld County even more so. We have 500 citizens that we know, that we know right now work and live in Evans that work in the oil and gas industry. That's 500 people. We need to be looking out for their jobs. We need to be looking out for the community. Those 500 people not only live here, they buy homes here, they shop here, they work here. They love it here, and we want them here. The way they're, this government down in Colorado, and the state capital down in Denver, are trying to end around this bill, and I don't like the way they're doing it. They're sneaking it past, they're trying to sneak it through, they're trying to pass it during blizzards. Everything about this bill is wrong. They need to take a step back and look at it, take some time to go through it, hear from the public. And that's what this is about here, and that's what this resolution's about. I want them to hear about it. So I am firmly against the Senate bill, and I will open it up to my city council, and then I will also, this is not a public hearing, but I will open it up to the crowd if there's anyone out there that wishes to speak on this item as well. So I know the Mayor Pro Tem, Mark Clark, would like to speak.
I want to echo what the mayor said, and I want to say that I support the oil and gas industry. You guys are a vital part to our community, not only to the city of Evans, but to Weld County and the state as a whole. You're not only our friends, but you're our neighbors, and you can contribute everything you have to this community. Back in November, it was overwhelmingly defeated by a margin of 58 to 42. But because of the radical left individuals that are elected, you know, and are state representatives, they believe that they know better than what your will is. They want to overturn your will. They want to overturn your vote. They've wanted to shift Colorado to the far extreme left. They don't understand that failed California politics have no business here in Colorado, especially with the oil and gas industry. What they have done so far is they've stripped away your electoral votes, and they said, "Your vote doesn't matter, we want to give it to the state of California. We want to let the most populated states, you know, decide who gets elected president and at the national levels." They've also stripped away your Second, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, and Fourteenth Amendment rights with this red flag law. They said, "We know better, and if we believe that you shouldn't have your guns, we're going to take them from you." Doesn't matter if you have due process or not, if we think you're a threat, we're going to take them from you. Then you have to go into a court and prove that you are not a threat, and then you have to wait at least a year before you can get your guns back if they prove that you're not a threat. Right now, they're also debating in the legislation rights to give illegal immigrants driver's license. And they're also talking about automatic voter registration. So with that, if illegal aliens are allowed to get driver's license, that means that they're going to be systematically allowed to vote. And then here, with this Senate bill, you know, defunding the will of the people on the oil and gas industry. They're trying to fundamentally change the state of Colorado, and I'm asking those that support your rights and your freedoms to stand up. There's a big effort going on in the state of Colorado that wants to recall Governor Polis. And unfortunately, we have to wait till July to make that happen. But we're asking those that believe in their freedoms and their rights to join us not only in recalling Governor Polis, but also to recall our House District 50 representative. She also is one of those that represents Weld County in this district, who is voting for these far leftist policies. So I hope you join us in doing that, thank you.
Other comments from council?
I'm not going to get on political soapbox, but I have supported oil and gas. My son is oil and gas. My husband, entire guy to oil field. I worked for a short time for oil and gas. It is not a bad field. It is the only place that's seen a lot of these businesses open. And for them to throw it in their faces and more or less tell them, "If you don't like it, you can go to another state." This is my Colorado.
I appreciate what council member Finn just said. I also know that the oil and gas industry is supporting our farmers. And being from the agricultural community, I think it's very important, and I don't think people realize, that that's how they get the food that they eat from the grocery store. It's how they get the clothing on their back. It's how we do our daily lives. And I think that the oil and gas industry has been highly regulated. I think that it's environmentally sound, we do the best that we can, and that we need to support the oil and gas industry while we are looking for alternative sources for energy in the future. But right now, the oil and gas industry is what is sustaining the life that we know as of today. So I totally support the industry and appreciate everything that they've done for the city, for the community, for the neighbors during the 2013 flood, and for the events that we have. They also continue to offer days of service where they do volunteerism, and I really do appreciate everything that they have done. And I think that the main focus here also needs to be that the voters have gone to the polls, we have voted, we have come out strong with support, and then to have this overturned in the middle of the night is just wrong, and I hope more people speak up against it.
Other comments from council?
On a daily basis, the news media's bomb marches with the wrong that President Trump is supposedly doing in circumventing Congress. Obviously, this governor and his compatriots are attempting to circumvent the will of the voters on this measure. And I'm strongly opposed to this kind of tactics. I'm not a politician, I'm here to serve. And I, it just really got to me about this. And I would like to, since Mayor Pro Tem Mark brought up something about the illegals receiving driver's license, today I was just informed that my $1,000 donation in memory of my cousin to the Ames Foundation for her scholarship memory fund can be given to illegals for college tuition purposes. I don't know how you feel about that, but I'm not real happy with it.
Let's try and stay on the topic of oil and gas tonight, guys, if we can.
Sorry.
That's okay. Nothing to be sorry for. Other comments or concerns?
So Evans is comprised of many oil and gas employees. Like mentioned, it's over 100 companies and 500 employees. My father worked for oil and gas. And oil and gas, it assists our city as, you know, council member Spear mentioned, whether it helps with our city's sustainability. Oil and gas has been there for the city, especially during our 2013 flood, which was crucial for our city. It helped our city rebuild itself. Because of that, I am for the resolution and also opposing the Senate bill.
While this is not a public hearing, we are anxious to hear, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council on this item? Please step up to the podium, state your name and address. Please try and limit your comments to two to three minutes, just so we have time. Thank you.
Jason Williamson, 3413 Rialto Avenue, Evans, Colorado, 80620. I am oil and gas. I've been in the industry since 2005. I started over in Grand Junction, I've seen what it's gone through. This bill, I adamantly oppose that they're trying to force on us. We voted on 112 and we defeated it by higher margins than he got into office. He's playing a political game. I'm trying to stay out of the political part of it, but we, the people, need to fight for our rights that are being taken away. I'm also very heavily involved in the recall. Polis that's going on, we can't do it till July 8th, but we do have 21,000 members in the state that are already on our Facebook page. I'm not the founder, but I'm one of the admins and heavily involved. So I just ask you, as our, I guess, our representatives for our town and our community, to keep strong, keep fighting for us. I mean, it's our industry, we go out there every day, we know what goes on. I've tried to educate people on what we do. There's so many regulations, I've been to several other states, and Colorado has the toughest regulations out of anybody. And so that's, that's all I got, just keep fighting for us. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address city council on this item? Welcome, please step up to the podium, state your name and address.
My name's Jenica Kuesenberry. I live at 3716 Leiter Court in Evans, and I am opposed to this because it's directed, it's directly affected me. They've done some drilling, like, very close to my house. It's made our neighbors sick, it's made me sick. I think some of the fumes, like, come back up through the pipes into the home, and it's really affected a lot of us in our community. And I don't, I think some people, I don't know if they understand sometimes that it can, like, how close that you're drilling to a home can really impact the health and safety of people. So I would like for you to consider that.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address city council on this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 06-2019.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 06-2019, a resolution opposing enactment of Senate Bill 19-181 regarding new regulation of the oil and gas development. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, Item A. Public hearing, consideration of ordinance Number 691-19, an ordinance approving the preliminary plat, plan for certain property referred generally as the Peak View Development, first reading, we'll hear from staff. Oh, excuse me, I have to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff would actually request that this item be continued to the April 2nd, 2019 city council meeting. We have conferred with the applicant, the development services team, reviewed the action and the documents before you, and we feel that a resolution taking this action is more appropriate than the ordinance before you this evening. That will actually help the applicant with their process from a time standpoint. And we feel like it's the best precedent for these types of actions. So we have conferred with the applicant, they're, you know, pleased to have that path established. And so we request continuous of this item tonight.
Yeah, thank you. No objections, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to move ordinance Number 69-19 to the April 2nd meeting.
I second.
I have a motion and a second to move Item Number 691-19 to the, to, what was the date?
April 2nd.
April 2nd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion passes. Next item, Item B, approval of an improvement agreement for North Point subdivision 6 filing. And we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this item is actually for a subdivision filing that was first approved by the city council a number of years ago, in 2004. At this point, the applicant wishes to complete the construction of the 6th filing. And with that, I'll ask our Public Works and Community Development Director, Randy Reedy, to give an overview of the application and the action we are requesting council to take this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, and I'd like to start by thanking the city attorney's office, Scott Throb, and our engineering office, especially Senior Civil Engineer, Rick Picard, sitting, sitting behind you, for a considerable amount of work with the applicant over the last several months to come to the document that's in front of you.
Can you slide your microphone a little closer to you?
This, this does complete activity that was begun over 14 years ago. Would authorize the improvements agreement for North Point filing 6. It includes 87 lots just to the north of Rock Point Drive, basically between 29th Avenue and North Point Drive. What's before you now is, there's three reasons for it. There are some utility connections, utilities, services that are involved in this that we are asking the developer to install, the city will then own and maintain. There's also a trail connection through some open space that the developer would install and maintain through the open space that would be maintained perpetually by the HOA that's involved with the North Point filing 6. These, this is work that's done by the developer, it's not done on behalf of the city, the contract is with the developer. So it is appropriate that we get this improvement agreement along with some performance guarantees to make sure this work is acceptable, timely, and then serves at the, to the benefit of the residents. So you have the agreement before you, as well as the ordinance from 2004, and staff will be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
What are the costs to the city again?
Pardon me?
What are the costs to the city, if any?
The costs will be the ongoing maintenance for the utilities, the streets, and kind of monitoring of the other improvements that are in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the improvements agreement for North Point subdivision 6 filing and authorize the mayor to sign the improvements agreement. I second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the improvements agreement for North Point subdivision 6 filing and authorize the mayor to sign the improvements agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion passes. Next item, Item D, consideration of construction bid award, 37th Street Utility Improvements Project. And we will hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. As council is aware, we're building toward an overlay, an asphalt overlay of 37th Street between the railroad tracks on the east and 23rd Avenue on the west. In advance of that project, we know how important it is to get the utility work done in that stretch so that when we're able to have that asphalt, that nice overlay, we don't have to go in and cut the street for water and sewer line issues that we know we already have. So it turns out that the utility project is actually the larger of the projects between the utilities and the overlay. I'll mention that it's, the budget for the utility work is just over $3 million in this year's budget. I want to point out that we also, that this project also benefits from a grant in the amount of $1 million from the Department of Local Affairs, which is from the Mineral Impact Grant Program, which comes to the state and ultimately to cities for projects like this from the oil and gas industry. So it's important to us. With that, I'll ask our Public Works and Community Development Director, Randy Reedy, to give an overview of the project and the contractor procurement process.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, this is an important piece of work, this is a milestone this evening. At your last meeting, as you recall, you approved the construction management contract for this piece of work, and we've put the construction manager immediately to work vetting the proposals that we received for this construction part of the work. Checked references very carefully, vetted proposals have been in contact with the apparent low bidder of Duran Excavating to make sure that their cost estimating was correct and that they're ready to proceed with this, excuse me, with this project. This does include sanitary sewer work, water work, as well as storm sewer work. So it's a considerable amount of work over an extended period of time, an extended piece of the city's main street. So we're looking at this very carefully, very seriously. We'll be doing this in a very safe and public manner, making sure that any kind of detours or lane restrictions are communicated well ahead of time with the public as we go. Changing conditions will be happening as we go block to block. This is, as Jim mentioned, a project funded in part by a state grant and also funded by our, the three utilities funds that I mentioned. The apparent low bidder is Duran Excavating, the contract amount would be $2.2 million with $100,000 of force account, a contingency, if you will, that would only be available with the city manager approval for extenuating circumstances as we get deep into the project. So this is a project, we included the cost bid sheets and the schedule in your packet. The schedule with your approval would allow the contractor to get going within the next week to 10 days, and it is a good amount of work that they, we will hold them to getting done before the asphalt plants close in December. So this amount of work with all the underground utilities and then the patching of the asphalt before the winter, come back next spring with the overlay of the entire section. So that is the plan, and that's the contract that's before you, and we'd appreciate any questions.
Thank you. Before I open this up to questions, I do want to state for the record, that Duran Excavating is Ellie Duran, Gary Duran, and Larry Duran, they are three personal friends of mine. Larry, Gary Duran is actually my Tuesday night men's league golf partner. While that would have no bearing on any decision I would make, I am recusing myself from this vote just to make sure we're all on board. So I'll be recusing myself from any comments or voting on this issue.
Well, I need to follow that up. Since Duran Excavating is a local company, and a lot of us know them, and I'm very happy that we are considering a local industry. I also have ties to Duran. My son is a, he is a, I don't know, operator, mechanical operator there. He is in no way anybody of any authority, but he does work for Duran, so I will also have to recuse myself.
Yeah, thank you. Council discussion?
I have none.
I just want to say, I'm very pleased to see these bids. It's great to see a bid that comes in under budget. I think the, the work we did at the last council meeting to approve the project manager is really paying off, and I'm pleased to see that. I think it's a great competitive bid with a really-
I think it's a great competitive bid with a really good company, and I think it'll really help the project to move forward in the most efficient, effective manner. So, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I would just tackle Amanda's comments. I'm very pleased that it's way under projected budget, and it's a reputable company to do business with. So, I'm glad that they'll be able to start work on this, let's get going on it, and let's not have any delays.
There's no other discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to award the 37th Street Utility Improvement Project to Duran Excavating Incorporated and authorize the mayor's signature on an agreement in the amount of $2,216,683.
Second.
I have a motion as second to award the 37th Street Utility Improvement Project to Duran Excavating, Inc., and authorize the mayor's signature on an agreement in the amount of $2,216,683. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Next item, Item E. Consideration of an intergovernmental agreement with Greeley Police Department and the Weld County Sheriff's Office to establish guidelines for the sharing of equitable asset seizures by the Weld County Drug Task Force. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick intro for me, this is, this is an amendment, or actually, it's an updated agreement to an agreement from 1999 that kind of anchors an important program for us regarding drug task force asset seizure. And with that, I'll ask our police chief, Rick Brandt, to give an overview of the updates, and then we'll request your consideration of the intergovernmental agreement.
Thanks, Jim. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Rick Brandt, Chief of Police. So, just broadly, the task force, previous IGA was made up of voting members. Evans was considered a contributing member because we've historically donated an investigator to the task force. Three agencies contribute, personnel, Greeley, Weld, and Evans. And the DOJ, Department of Justice, recently reviewed how task forces are handling seizure money that's been coming in through drug assets, sale of cars, all that kind of thing. Previously, we've been working under the assumption that as a task force, as a control board, we could manage all the money coming in, and that fund was used to aid law enforcement throughout the county. And no particular agency was getting any of the money, there'd be requests coming in, we buy bomb suits, we buy dogs, we buy equipment, and provide services to the county. When DOJ reevaluated how those expenditures were being managed, they said that's in violation of the intent of the entire process, and they said each of the contributing agencies now have to take a fair share of those funds. So, after many, many months of discussion and analysis, we broke out how the shares would be distributed between three contributing agencies, and the funding for the task force has not changed. Greeley PD pays about $160-some thousand a year, Weld pays about $80,000 a year, and we're going to be paying about 3% of total asset seizures as our share to help maintain the task force. Nothing changes in terms of the mission or vision of the task force itself. So, at the end of the day, instead of these monies being in a big pool available for the entire county law enforcement, City of Evans, Police Department specifically, will get 7% of any seizure funds that we put in to share on. So, that's the long and short of it. The funds, once we receive them, are strictly dictated by the federal government on how we can use them. We can't use them to supplant budgets or anything like that within the police department, but it will be a valuable asset for us for some equipment purchases and that sort of thing moving forward. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Questions of Chief Brandt or city manager Jim?
No, Chief actually answered the questions I was going to ask with the, how it's going to be distributed out and what the money could be used for, so I have none.
How are those funds monitored? I mean, do we, do we have to provide documentation to some authoritative board or something on that? And do we have a timeline as to how soon we have to use that funding? Or is it something that we can carry over in a restricted fund balance?
So, the funds are heavily regulated in terms of reporting purposes, so we have to go through an entire process through the federal judicial system before they're made available to us for the split, once they hit the three contributing agencies. So, lots of oversight on how those are done. Once we get them, there's no time limit when we can spend it, there's just certain specific regulations, you know, got to be between the lines on what we can spend it with. I can't supplant an officer's salary, for instance, with it, but I could purchase a one-time item that we couldn't afford and use it for those, and then that has to be reported back to the federal government and the state authorities as well. I have to report to both now, and they will assess our usage of those and audit us regularly.
And then, that 7%, what was that based off of? And can that change annually, or is that set for some term?
So it's based on how many personnel each of us are contributing, so we're contributing about 10% of the workforce to the task force, and we agreed that of that 10% share that we'd be entitled to, that we would contribute 3% of that back to the task force for operations. So, yes, it could change if in the future we decide to either withdraw from the task force or add staff to the task force, it could change the percentages.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Other questions of Chief Brandt? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the chief of police to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Greeley Police Department and the Weld County Sheriff's Office regarding the Weld County Drug Task Force.
My second.
I have a motion as second to authorize the chief of police to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Greeley Police Department and the Weld County Sheriff's Office regarding the Weld County Drug Task Force. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next item, consideration of Resolution Number 07-2019, a resolution adopting the appointment of the Evans City Treasurer. We'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Section 4.8A of the Evans City Charter provides for the city manager's appointment of the city treasurer with the approval by majority vote of all the members of the entire city council. It's a quote. Deputy City Manager Jessica Gonifis has held this designation for many years, and the role, I should say, the role of the treasurer is to manage the city's investment portfolios, and for those who might not be aware, cities are fairly restricted in how they can invest funds, but there does need to be an eye on this and someone who can work with some other expertise, experts that we have, so that's really that role. With Jessica's pending departure from the city, staff is requesting the city council consider the resolution in front of you to ratify the appointment of Finance Manager Jackie Trout as the Evans City Treasurer. This is an additional duty to be held concurrently with her finance manager role, and I will add that there is no additional compensation for these duties. Jackie's been with the city for over four years, serving in the role of Finance Manager. She is a certified public accountant, and has served very responsibly in her role with the city. She's also gained a solid understanding of the requirements of how Evans does the treasurer role from Jessica, and has been cross-trained in all the duties now for some time. So with that, I recommend your appointment of Jackie Trout as our city treasurer.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Questions of city staff?
No questions. I just want to say that Jackie's been doing a fantastic job as the finance manager. I know when I was on finance committee, she did a fantastic job, you know, talking to us and discussing us about the budget and the city assets and how they're invested, so I think this is a no-brainer.
Other questions or comments?
I would just like to echo what Councilmember Clark said. I think that Jackie does a great job. There's not anyone I would trust more. I appreciate it, thank you, Jackie. I appreciate her hard work and her dedication to the city and her willingness to dive in, so fully support it.
My question is actually to Mr. Beckenbauer. Is Jackie going to be overwhelmed with any kind of workload on this? My concern is, she does such a great job for the city, I want her to be happy working here and to continue on, and so is she going to be able to relinquish another job? Is there something that we can do to help make sure that she doesn't get overloaded with any kind of workload from this?
Yes, Councilmember Spear, we are putting those plans into place. Fortunately, we have a great and fairly deep finance staff, not a lot of people, but they do a lot of work, and the best thing is, is that they're eager to grow their own skills and their own, you know, portfolios within the department. They're eager to take on more, so this has been a really, I think, energizing, well, maybe a little daunting, time for the finance department, but I know we're having lots of conversations now about how others can step in to take on some of the operational roles that Jackie has done as she kind of assumes some of the duties in finance for financial strategy that Jessica has. So, lots of conversations going on, we're confident that we can do that in a way that can support all the work that we have, but keep it manageable for all of our staff.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I'm excited for you, Jackie. This is great, and I'm excited, I mean, this is a well-deserved role, and I think you do great at it, and you've been doing great, you know, and with Jessica's guidance and assistance, you, I think you'll definitely do great at this. And, thank you, thank you for taking this on, you know, because there's no additional compensation, and that just speaks volumes of you and your willingness to help us, you know, as a city, to grow and add another hat to that list of hats I'm sure you already have, so thank you.
And Jackie, I would echo what our other council members have previously said, and I'm still hoping that you can come up with that investment that produces a huge windfall for the city.
Any other comments, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 07-2019.
My second.
I have a motion as second to adopt Resolution Number 07-2019. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Thank you, Jackie.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie.
I'd make a report, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's just mention for the benefit of the council and the public that we have now added a YouTube section to the city council website to allow the public or any others to view, to livestream city council meetings. So this evening's meeting will be posted shortly after the meeting, and we're establishing our protocols for doing that. That's all I have to do, Mayor.
So it's live, you can watch it as it happens, and then, within a few minutes, we can go back and watch it again?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just a brief update on the EQR litigation. There's two settlements that were given to the court. They have 30 days basically to file objections, those objections are due this Thursday. Barring any objections, which we don't foresee any, the trustee will file a motion with the court to enter judgment, and then will be, I don't want to say it, but hopefully done with that, at least that section of the litigation, and can move on to March, or I'm sorry, April 8th, when we'll have a status conference to see if there's any remaining claims and who's kind of left in litigation. We're also working on a bunch of development. You saw North Point, sixth filing, Peak View, we have a couple others coming, and thanks to the snowstorm last Thursday, municipal court will be twice as long as usual, so if you're not doing anything, come now.
Thank you, Dan. Next item on the agenda is audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address city council on any item? Seeing none, before I close the meeting, I'm going to embarrass you one more time, Jessica, and just say thank you again on behalf of the city council and the City of Evans, for the public that's here now, if you don't mind standing up, Jessica, this is Jessica Gonifis, she is our deputy city manager, she'll, this will be her last city meeting, she's been with us for the last 12 years, she's been one of the greatest assets this city's ever had, and we're going to miss her deeply, so thank you again, Jessica.
Thank you, Jessica.
And that, beating adjourned. Thank you, everyone.